Good evening, everyone. Tonight we are going to start with your presentation, and PCG.
Welcome everyone. We're going to start then with a public presentation from representatives of Public Consulting Group. If you've been here before, have noticed we, this past summer, contracted with PCG. They come in and they bring them to our special education services. And so they create a report in the presentation to share their findings tonight with community. With that, I'm going to invite Matt up to maybe say a few words about yourself and jump right in. All right. You have the defender. I'll get you.
Members of the board, members of the public, good evening. We're very pleased to be here tonight to present the findings of the study that picked off this summer. We have been part of work in terms of spending a great deal of time with the committed staff and administrators of this district, conducting classroom walkthroughs, and visiting every building in the district to create actual recommendations that will be retained. First, I'll go through our agenda, then we'll introduce ourselves, and then we'll get into it. Yes. Thank you. Can you read this? What we're going to do tonight is go through the project team, the overview for this work, our approach, the research questions that guided this work, and the data collection we went through to create these recommendations, and then we'll get into commendations and recommendations. In terms of the team, my name is Matthew Gorobkin. I'm the project director and subject matter expert that led this initiative. My experience, I started in the classroom as a special education teacher. I worked for two state education departments, most recently the Delaware Department of Education. I've been with PCG now for three years doing this work, both locally as well as nationally. And my colleague.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Elaine Lerner. I'm the subject matter expert with Public Consulting Group. I also was previously in a specialized classroom as a teacher for several years. And I'm now an advisor, and I used to be at the New Jersey Department of Education, Office of Special Education Programs, and I work as an advisory in Public Consulting Group.
Thank you. There are others on this project who were very instrumental in creating it. We're not here tonight, nevertheless, we want to recognize their efforts. Dr. Jennifer Mallor, who served as an advisor to this work. She's an associate solutions manager at the firm and the former director of operations in the School District of Philadelphia's Office of Specialized Destruction, as well as John DeShaw, who served as the data analyst to this work, and has a great deal of experience in public schools in New Jersey around data. A little bit about PCG before we get into the report itself. PCG's been around for 30 years, starting in 1986. Our focus is exclusively on improving the impact of human services, health, and education agencies at the local, state, and federal levels. We have over 2,500 folks part of work in these areas, over 50 US offices, and nine offices across Canada and the UK in addition to our work here in the United States. We have a great deal of experience in transforming cultures and delivering outcomes in the areas of mental health and education. And we currently have recent clients in 21 state education agencies plus the District of Columbia, as well as 18 of the 25 largest districts in the United States. In terms of this work, program review work in particular, here's a sampling of the districts that we have worked with on program reviews, both nationally. You'll see some of the largest districts in the United States, as well as locally, both here in New Jersey as well as across the Hudson River. A great number of districts have undergone the self-reflection that your district has in terms of going through this process. In terms of PCG's approach to this work, we go through a five-phase approach. And what I've done here is outlined not only the phases, but also the timing as it relates to Rockaway's engagement in this activity. So we kicked this off in August, and during that time, we worked with the district in creating a project planning timeline. Phase two, we customized the approach. That two was in the summer in August. We agreed upon metrics for success. We discussed protocols, tools. We conducted a data request, which was very significant, both qualitative and quantitative. Phase three was September through November of 2019, where we acquired all of the data and artifacts from the district that were submitted via the administration. We conducted interviews, focus groups, a student file review, using redacted files to talk about a process by which decisions are made, and classroom walkthroughs. Phase four, we developed reports that subsequently have informed this presentation tonight. That was between December and January. Phase five, we're here right now, our presentation to the board this evening, as well as the steps that the administration will be undertaking thereafter in terms of action planning to realize the recommendations that are outlined in this report. I'll also say, in terms of the report itself as we go through it, that it's intentional that we don't have recommendations called out by number one, number two, number three. That action planning that the district will be undertaking, the district itself will be identifying which of the recommendations are the most pressing recommendations, and how we'll embark upon the recommendations, knowing that this is not a process that will occur overnight. It will occur over the course of months and possibly years based upon the course of action the district takes. Our approach is a thoughtful approach in that we triangulate and triangulated the data in the report itself, looking at outcome analysis through student population data, through student achievement data. We conducted an organizational and program analysis, looking at both the school and district level programming. We conducted a financial review, and we conducted extensive classroom walkthrough, cross-selection of all of these special education programs throughout the district, as well as the district's inclusion classrooms. We also looked at and thoroughly reviewed research and best practice. In addition, we are also working to make sure that in all of this, we're talking about the Individuals with Disabilities Act. At the end of the day, this isn't a compliance audit, this is a collaborative review. At the same time, we call out areas that we want to be consistent with IDA and state policy on. The guiding research questions. These five questions ultimately served as the North Star for this report, and subsequently created, shaped how we conducted our work throughout the district. I'm going to read them to you. First, "To what extent do the instructional services in RTSD meet the needs of students with disabilities in the district?" Two, "To what extent is the district meeting the needs of students with disabilities and their families in the area in compliance with state and federal recommendations?" Three, "To what extent does the district utilize its educators to provide services for students to support student learning outcomes, namely teachers, paraprofessionals, educators in general?" Four, "To what extent has the district's school and district leadership fostered an instructional program in district culture that supports meeting the unique educational needs of students with disabilities?" And five, "To what extent do the district's internal and external communication practices foster collaboration among staff and families in support of students with disabilities?" As I mentioned earlier, the onsite data collection. We interviewed over 70 participants in October, and through that process, we had organizational focus groups and interviews, as well as student file review focus groups, to really get at the heart of how decisions are made as it relates to creating, may it be, aspects of the special education, individual education program, IDP, and decisions thereafter as it relates to progress monitoring and the programs themselves. In November, we returned to the district. We conducted an interview of paraprofessional staff, and we also conducted classroom walkthroughs of specialized programs, inclusion classrooms. And we also visited every cool-down room in the district. And presently, cool-down rooms or rest stops are located in five of the six buildings in the district. In the fall, we conducted a qualitative analysis, documents. The district provided over 80 qualitative documents, many of those documents, you know, between 10 pages to 200 pages based upon the document. And also a quantitative analysis of district provided quantitative data. Now we're going to get into the recommendations and commendations. And I'll say right now, I'm going to read these verbatim. I think it's important that I not paraphrase. This is how they're written in the report, and I think I want to make sure that I'm doing it justice and reading through them each one. The recommendations and commendations are broken out, are following. Student, or I mean, special education referral eligibility. Teaching and learning, our teaching, learning, and social-emotional support for students with disabilities. The organization, that's really the special education department as an organization, and collaboration, communication, and family engagement, and that as it relates to students with disabilities. We'll start with special education referral eligibility, and again, I'll remind you that this isn't in any rank order. First is Child Find. In the report, there's more detail on each of these. I'll provide a very brief summary on each one of these, but the report will have more information. Child Find, of course, is the process by which the district is obligated to find students who are struggling and subsequently may have disabilities and possibly, and subsequently evaluate. In terms of the commendations, the district has a dedicated Child Find page linked to its specialized department page on the website. The recommendations, "Train and/or retrain all RTSD administration on specialized compliance matters, including Child Find. Child Find is not a one-time event, and it does not occur only for preschool children." Include detailed, specific information about Child Find on the RTSD website, including New Jersey's Project Child Find, which is a page that you can Google and subsequently find. This is a relatively simple page. Response to intervention. This is a program, or rather, a series of interventions that are tiered, so to speak. I could go on and on about this particular one, but at the end of the day, it's not a special education initiative. It's a general education initiative that subsequently provides tiered supports to struggling learners, interventions that provide data, and can subsequently inform child study team referrals for students that are struggling and may need special education services. In terms of the commendations, the district has committed resources to having a district-wide RTI system with the intent to support struggling learners, both academically and behaviorally. That's very important to note, that the district is doing both, which is very important. The next, the district is in the process of creating an RTI handbook, and the district has sought teacher and expert feedback in the creation of this handbook. Also important, the stakeholder piece has been included. And in the 1920 school year, the district administration staffed each of its schools with at least one full-time reading specialist and one full-time academic intervention teacher to meet the needs of supporting student interventions to support its RTI system. In terms of recommendations, we recommend the district complete its RTI/INRS district handbook, provide clarification on when it's appropriate for the INRS/RTI team to make a child study team referral, and consider leveraging the NJTSS guidelines to support the district's RTI handbook. The State Department of Education has recently put guidelines out on this, and they may be of use to the district as it finalizes this work. The next, empower teacher reviewers, who hopefully serve as experts on this RTI handbook, to be district ambassadors of its rollout, if it's your leaders of it. Engage in district-wide, high-quality RTI training across the district, strengthening the expertise of what RTI is and how it should be used as a district-wide model for instruction, and that it not be limited to I and RS intervention and referral services. When a child is identified as needing Tier Two or Tier Three interventions, consistently identify and utilize research-based interventions and instructional strategies, consistently monitor and document student progress. And lastly, catalog and document available Tier Two and Tier Three research-based interventions. Provide a catalog to CST members, specialized teachers, general education teachers, and building leaders. Next, getting into identification, pre-referral in the child study team, CST. The commendations, the district and building administration express a desire to leverage its RTI to make data-informed pre-referrals and CST referrals when needed appropriate. Recommendations, require all CST referrals by INRS. You know that child study team referrals come in many different shapes and sizes, but when they do come through that route, that they be data-informed, leveraging targeted research-based interventions to provide information on student's progress. The next, analyze data regarding referral rates for CST via INRS Intervention Referral Services/RTI. For students referred to RTI, assess how long they were engaged in RTI intervention before a CST referral was made. Engage in this activity on a monthly basis to ensure the effectiveness of interventions and timely child study team referrals when needed. And remember that although the district has renamed its INRS process RTI, the district is still obligated under, I've cited here the regulation code, to provide intervention and referral services. There are additional recommendations. The next, remove terminology in district documentation stating that a district has "eligible" for RTI supports. RTI is a district-wide initiative available for all students, and students need not be "eligible" to receive supports. Provide comprehensive training to ensure that staff are not limiting RTI to students who are struggling, as was the original intention of IRS. RTI is a general ed initiative district-wide to support struggling learners, whereas IRS is specific and limited to students identified as struggling learners. Align district RTI manual to state guidance, and refer to the guidelines as needed. And I provide the link. Ninety-day timeline. According to the district, in terms of commendation, the district's annual performance report, 97.1% of children that were evaluated by CSTs within the 90-day window following, or were evaluated following that window, the 90-day window of parental consent. Given the district's administrative turnover, that adherence to the timelines is commendable. Recommendation, continue monitoring this to ensure that it's timely and compliant, and aim to meet the target of 100%. The state sets a target of 100% in this area. That 100% of children evaluated by CSTs are done so within the 90-day window that follows parental consent. The next, include evaluation practices and determination of eligibility practices in a specialized standard operating procedures manual. Presently, the district does not have a standard operating procedures manual around special education. Using specific and relevant student data, provide additional information to families about the determination and eligibility. The next area, teaching, learning, and social-emotional supports for students with disabilities. Early childhood. Commandations, the district's early childhood program has been found to be in full compliance with the LRE settlement terms. The LRE settlement terms are defined in greater detail, as you know, in the settlement document, but also in other documentation. RTSD, another commendation, has an in-house behaviorist to support the district's ABA early childhood program. In terms of recommendations, ensure the inclusive specialized program is operated with a curriculum that its teachers adhere to. If the district no longer desires to use the creative curriculum, select and implement a new preschool curriculum, and train all preschool staff on that curriculum. Ensure that staff are aware and follow the New Jersey preschool teaching, learning standards of the New Jersey preschool teaching. Guidelines, create more inclusive preschool special education program, programming. Closely monitor indicator six, this is an indicator in the state's annual performance report that's required by the Federal, US Department of Education. Closely monitor indicator six, preschool LRE performance results from the state's APR, ensuring the district is trending to and eventually meeting the state's targets. And internally monitor LRE data in-house. LRE increase restricted requirement. Assess quarterly the district's LRE rates as calculated with the APR. Now going into the programming, specialized programming. The district is leveraging its one-to-one laptop initiative to support students with disabilities. This is something we clearly saw throughout the district. RTSD has an in-house BCBA, the Board Certified Behavior Analyst, who supports the district's autism program. In terms of recommendations, ensure consistent data collection across all programs to confirm accurate, consistent ID progress monitoring that informs instruction. In the autism program, ensure consistent access to a behaviorist. Consider creating additional structure to the in-house behavior schedule with dedicated time to provide devices and training for autism programming. In the behavior disability program, adhere to one name. The nomenclature for the district's BD programming seems to be inconsistent and stony crooked, it's referred to by various folks as FLEX. In the learning and/or language disability program, also known as LLD, ensure that district instructions occurring by and only highly qualified teachers. Consider utilizing fewer paraprofessionals and more specialized teachers to ensure this. And this is, in particular, this is about direct instruction. As we know, highly qualified teachers are supposed to be providing direct instruction. In the LLD program, offer programs outside a substantially separate program, or substantially separate classroom, and that's of course, when appropriate and determined by the IDP. And agree on a district-wide definition of inclusion and promote it throughout the district. Districts all over, not only New Jersey, but the United States struggle with, what is inclusion? How do we define inclusion? That's where that recommendation comes from. Unpacking standards. And when we say standards here, we're talking about the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, also known as NJSLS. The staff expressed a very strong desire to meet the curricular needs of students with disabilities. In terms of enterprise times, there was question or comment about special education curriculum. What's the special education curriculum? At the end of the day, it's really about unpacking the existing standards. In terms of the recommendations, engage all teaching staff in low-incidence disability programming and professional development on how to unpack standards. The perception of a specialized curriculum is incorrect and contradictory to what's stated in NJAC 6A-14 in the Individuals with Disabilities Act. Co-teaching. When we say co-teaching, we mean co-teaching as in, a general education teacher and a specialized education teacher in the same classroom, teaching together to support all learners with the specialized teacher specifically providing supports to the students with IDPs. The district's administrators, both at district levels as well as building level, and teachers have expressed a very strong desire to have a consistent co-teaching model district-wide. In terms of the recommendations, agree on a district-wide definition of co-teaching, the co-teaching instructional model, by which both the general and specialized teachers are working together with groups of students, sharing in the planning, organization, delivery, and assessment of instruction, all while following IDP. Under a successful co-teaching model, to a casual observer, it should be almost impossible to determine which teacher is a general ed teacher and which is a specialized ed teacher. Provide consistent professional development on co-teaching to both special and general ed teachers. Refrain from using specialized education teachers as "helper teachers." And for teachers in co-taunt setting, supervisors should be able to evaluate adherence to the district's co-teaching model, but there has to be, of course, a consistent definition around that first. The use of paraprofessionals in the district, also known as teacher aides in various settings in the district. In terms of commendations, the district has made an effort to address paraprofessional vacancies and provide more hours to its paraprofessionals by creating a four-day work schedule. Paraprofessionals that were previously considered .5 FTE can now work 26 hours per week, 6.5 hours a day for four days. This new configuration bumps those who elect to be on this schedule from .5 FTE to .8 FTE. And of course, you know, this addresses paraprofessional turnover, which across the state as well as the country is a national issue, and this is giving more hours and time to your paraprofessionals. In the 1718 school year, the district began to create a framework to assist CSTs in determining the appropriateness of including paraprofessional support to child's IDP. Those efforts have since stopped, but the district began an effort, and so that's better to have started than to have never started at all. In terms of recommendations, we recommend the district create a district-wide, district-wide operating procedures in assisting CSTs in determining the appropriateness of a paraprofessional, making sure that the right resources are with the right students at the right time. Provide clarification to CSTs on district-wide operating practices, ensuring that the district's prior guidance of strictly not including one-to-one is removed. There was past guides on this, it's old guidance, but nevertheless, making sure that the old guidance is no longer used as the present guidance. The district no longer follows it, nevertheless, when old documents hang around, some folks may be confused or mistaken. At the CST level, when determining the needs of paraprofessionals, first consider other alternatives, as well as the inadvertent detrimental effects of associating excessive paraprofessional proximity. Create district-wide operating procedures to determine when it may be appropriate to fade paraprofessional support. A fade protocol should drive, be driven by qualitative and quantitative data. Again, you're hearing "data" as a theme, making sure that data is informing these decisions, they're not arbitrary. And create district-wide operating practices on how paraprofessional support is documented at the IDP, so it's consistently documented across IDPs across the district. Continuing these recommendations on paraprofessionals, ensure that all paraprofessionals who work with students who have or may exhibit behavioral protocols be formally trained in the district's de-escalation and restraint protocols. Ensure the district can effectively train and certify appropriate staff on handle with care, which is the protocol that the district subscribes to, either through its own district trainers or outside trainers. Ensure that all paraprofessionals who can support students in the building, in its corridors, and who work with students who may have a behavioral issue, have ready access to communication in an emergency, maybe through a phone or walkie-talkie. Provide ongoing and meaningful professional development, mentoring, coaching, and performance appraisals to paraprofessionals. Assess that students who have paraprofessional assignments are minimal supports from a substitute. They're receiving minimal substitute support, that they're receiving support from the paraprofessional's assignment. And consistently document with the IDP, as I said earlier, the need. Universal design for learning. This is a mindset backed by tons of data as it relates to providing students with access in meaningful ways. The brain science behind it is pretty incredible. Many of the district's teachers are already engaging in universal design practices. However, they don't necessarily know it in name, and this was especially apparent in the district's teachers leveraging its one-to-one laptop initiative, finding ways of providing access to students that's meaningful. Recommendations, embed UDL throughout the district's RTI programming. They go hand-in-hand. Provide clear examples in the district's RTI guidance on how UDL must be harnessed as part of RTI, and provide ongoing professional development on universal design for learning. And there are statewide initiatives through NJTOY on this that could be leveraged. Narrowing into the meat of the IDP, Individualized Education Program. In terms of commendations, teaching staff and child study team members express an interest in continued improvement and professional development in the creation of the PLAF, the present levels of academic and cultural performance. Something for folks in the room who know what IDP is, it's typically in the relatively front end of the document, and provides a place to start from in terms of, what are the child's present levels, and how do we subsequently build IDP goals from them? In terms of recommendations, require mandatory training for all CST members and specialized teachers on the creation of robust, consistent, legally defensible PLAF statements. And again, in the report, we talked about data as it relates to that. Require all new specialized education teacher hires to participate in a PLAF training. Require all new special education teacher hires to participate in PLAF training. Require PLAF refresher courses to C S T members and specialized teachers. Review existing I E Ps to ensure that I E P goals are tied to the PLAF statements. So that if a deficiency is called out or a challenge is called out in the PLAF, you subsequently want appropriate goals that are tied to it vice versa. Develop consistent specialized standard operating practice procedures that include all aspects of I E P writing. Next, academic and functional goals. Throughout the I E P, there are goals and that subsequently informs instruction. Teaching staff and C S T members express, again, an interest in continued improvement and professional development and academic and functional goal development. Some of these may sound similar to the last slide. Require mandatory training to C S T members and specialized teachers on the creation of SMART, standards-aligned, legally defensible I E P academic, functional and transitional goals that can subsequently be progress monitored. Specific, measurable, attainable, uh, relatable and, I mean, relevant in time bounds, what SMART stands for. Standards aligned, today aligned to the New Jersey student learning standards. Legally defensible, it means that if for whatever reason, whatever party is having an argument over it, that the goal can subsequently hold up. And that at the end of the day, it's, it's progress, can be progress monitored so that you can see whether or not the child is making progress over time. Require all new specialized teachers and C S T hires to participate in I E P goals training. Require that I E P goals training refresher courses, the administer to C S T members and specialized ed teachers. Develop consistent specialized standard operating procedures that include all aspects of I E P writing. Progress monitoring and reporting, as we discussed earlier. Again, the teaching staff and C S T members expressed an interest in continued improvement and professional development in this area. And again, this may sound redundant, but nevertheless, through our conversation, we were able to really identify that a strong need in all of these aspects of the I E P. Require mandatory training to all C S T members and specialized ed teachers on progress monitoring as part of I E P goals training. Require all new specialized ed teachers and C S T hires to participate in progress line training. Require refresher training on this matter to the C S T members and specialized ed teachers. This one is important, develop robust, detailed progress management report that is used district-wide to graphically display data over time. And possibly consider utilizing electronic case management system that allows for the capture of data and subsequent creation of progress reports that connect to these data and use consistent operating procedures. The second to last bullet, at the end of the day, progress should be monitored and monitored with data. You should be able to see data over time and that of course, is subsequently informing how the child is meeting or perhaps not meeting their goals. Transition planning. Transition is in both code as well as the Individual with Disabilities Act. In terms of middle school, the I E P team members in the middle school shared their eagerness to communicate with the high school district about rising middle school students around transition. Teaching staff and child study team members expressed an interest in continued improvement and professional development in this area. Recommendations, require that all students who will be turning fourteen years old during their I E P participate in research-based pre-vocational skills assessment, um, that presently isn't happening in the district. And again, back to data, that would yield valuable data in terms of informing transition conversations and transition goals. Leverage results from the vocational skills assessment to have meaningful data-driven conversations. Ensure that well-intentioned conversations that occur between Copland Middle School staff and Morris High School district that are about transition needs are not leading to I E P decisions occurring outside the I E P team. So you can have broad conversations as it relates to programming, but not conversations that are specific to students that may be, um, I E P conversations. Ensure that all students in I E Ps have access to high-quality transition goals regardless of their disability category. In terms of the I E P accommodations and modifications, teaching staff and C S T members expressed an interest in continued improvement and professional development in the appropriate selection and implementation of accommodations and modifications for students with disabilities. In terms of recommendations, provide mandatory training to all C S T members and specialized ed teachers on the appropriate selection of accommodations. Provide mandatory training to new specialized ed teachers on the appropriate use and selection of combinations. Consistently, this is important, consistently use the most recent N J S L A accommodations handbook and ensure consistent selection and subsequent use of accommodations. If when students choose not to use the accommodations, collect data and share them with the I E P team to inform future discussions and decisions about the need. Um, this is oftentimes something that happens in middle school where a child may choose not to use that accommodation, um, which, which is certainly, you know, based on what's happening may be appropriate, but collect data on it so that's informing your conversation with the I E P team. The I E P, there's a section called supports for school personnel. Again, your teaching staff and C S T members express an interest in engaging meaningful training opportunities in this specific area relates to students with I E Ps training. When filling this section or completing this section, include meaningful training opportunities specific to students, um, within that specific I E P. The behavior intervention plan, also known as the B I P. This is where students who may have had a functional behavior assessment that's determined that it's appropriate for the child to have a B I P. Commendations, the district has a dedicated board-certified behavior analyst who works here in the district. And he plays a role in the creation of all student B I Ps. Terms of the recommendation, develop consistent operating practices around the B I Ps, specifically around parent signature acknowledgement, making sure that that's a consistent practice. Use only one B I P per student. If a more robust version of a B I P exists outside the I E P case management system, include it in the system incorporated as part of the I E P. Extended school year programming, this is for children where the I E P team has determined that it's appropriate for a child to receive extended school year services. Commendation, the district administration shared their commitment to provide high-quality E S Y programming and have student I E P decisions made by the I E P. In terms of our recommendations, we recommend the district ensure consistent processes around E S Y determination and that decisions around E S Y occur at the I E P meeting and that the district not engage in any I E P decision-making outside of the I E P. Continuity of instruction. The idea here is grade to grade, school to school. Middle school teachers are, uh, middle school C S T members are in communication with the receiving high school district. C S Ts about students. And another commendation, teaching staff and C S T members are very eager to collaborate with each other across the buildings, across the district. And that was very apparent. Uh, the teaching staff in this district is extremely committed, has been here for a long time, as well as the paraprofessional staff. And the cross-pollination came across as very important. Recommendations, um, the district possibly identified times before this started new school year for special education teachers to communicate with each other outside of each building for the purpose of ensuring improved continuity of instruction for students with disabilities. Related services, related service could be occupational therapy, speech and language pathology, uh, physical therapy, uh, number of therapy services that fall under this category. In terms of the district's commendations, the district related service providers are very eager to provide high-quality services to students. There are sometimes in spaces less than ideal. In terms of recommendations, we recommend the district further study spaces presently being used for related service provision at Copland Middle School. District-wide, ensure that related services are occurring in appropriate spaces. Ensure that counseling is occurring in spaces where confidential conversations can occur. Ensure that occupational physical therapies are occurring in spaces where service delivery can occur. Ensure that speech services are occurring in spaces where there is one group service delivery model or one individual service delivery occurring in one room. So you're in concurrent session subsequently, modeling the other or vice versa. Assistant technology, um, these are the technologies that are called out in the I E P to support students with disabilities. The district has a teaching staff that is using its one-to-one laptop initiative as an equalizer to provide multimodal learning opportunities to all students, to these students with disabilities. Teaching staff is very well-versed in how to use the technology so that all students in the classroom, regardless if they have a disability or not, are receiving access to this school. The district has invested in an F M system or multiple F M systems throughout many of its buildings and these systems are in use. Essentially, the teacher has a microphone that's attached to their neck. Uh, there are headphones that the students may have or there may be speakers in the, excuse me, speakers in the classroom, uh, much like how we're doing this right now. So students who have hearing impairments as well as students who have attention challenges, whatever it may be, um, the system provides support to them. Terms of recommendations, ensure the district has access to a qualified assistant technology consultant who's available to conduct A T evaluations, serve as a consultant to the I E P team, provide training to I E P teams and students and service devices when needed. And there are multiple credential avenues out there. One of them is where there's, but there are others that the district may consider in terms of what a qualification may be in this area. Ensure that the device maintenance and implementation is not solely by the district's instructional technology staff and/or custodial staff, um, such as the installation and maintenance of that NAP system. And consider investing in staff who may already have A T credentials. Provide support as well as continued, uh, education credits to these folks and allow them to dedicate time so that they can provide specific A T consulting to address an A T caseload, A T main assistant technology. Physical education, adapted physical ed. In terms of the district's commendations, the district's working to ensure, has been working, to ensure access to physical ed. The district contracts with and apply physical or adaptive physical education, uh, instructor to provide A T services to students who have this service in their I E P. Provide operating procedures around, including P E in the I E P. If an I E P team believes the child is struggling to access a general ed physical, with a general physical ed program, I E P goals may need appropriate. Seclusion and timeout, the next section. For this section, uh, we did not have any commendations. In terms of recommendations, we have a number of them. Per N J D O E guidance, uh, this is not a mandate, it's guidance, from July ten, twenty eighteen, annually inform parents about the district's policies for restraint and seclusion, including the district's choice not to employ seclusion per its board policy and regulation, per current board policy and regulation. The next, discontinue the use of cooldown rooms, timeout rooms or rest stops district-wide. Instead, develop safe spaces within the classroom that support students in crisis and if need be, allow for other students to safely evacuate from classroom and continue learning in another room. We recommend the dismantling of these spaces and we recommend the district engage and/or hire maybe the contract, part-time or full-time behaviors who have the expertise to develop and implement programming to support the safe learning spaces. We recommend the district develop new protocols to support students with behavioral challenges who previously were escorted or voluntarily went to cooldown rooms. Leverage handle with care to accomplish this. Handle with care is the, um, de-escalation and restraint protocol that the district presently subscribes to. Continued recommendations, following the dismantling of cooldown rooms, provide comprehensive professional development to all special education staff on new protocols to support the de-escalation of student behaviors without having to isolate them in a separate space. Next, form a human rights committee that on a monthly basis reviews every restraint and/or timeout, ensuring the district behaviorists are members. Side note to that, collect data to ensure that students are being treated correctly during restraint and are repeatedly being restrained and/or, uh, being in timeouts. Next, add existing, add to existing board policy regulations on the definition of what a core timeout is. And remind all staff, per board policy, seclusion is not allowed in our P S D. Next, due process mediation. Terms of commendations, over the past three years, the district has had very few due process violations and no formal D O E complaints. In terms of, and that's specific to special education. In terms of recommendations, the district may consider engaging the Department of Education on facilitated I E P program that are the facilitated I E P program, also known as F I E P, and leveraging F I E P during potentially contentious I E P meeting meetings to promote productive I E Ps. And this is a free service offered by the New Jersey Department of Education. Next, when a parent shares with the I E P team that they have an attorney, continue engaging in I E P meetings. And if there is a breakdown, leverage F I E P. The district leadership, the current district leadership and the Board of Education is eager to stabilize the turnover in the superintendent and special education director roles. And this was across the board, very apparent. In terms of leadership recommendation, develop a cohesive district-wide vision for special education. And I can say through this process, we've already observed the district moving forward and making steps in this area. As the new leader of special, of the specialized department, the special education director should immediately begin hosting internal and external engagement opportunities to assess the immediate needs of the program. Next, using the special education review, the specialized director should develop a ninety-day plan to assess the present state of the district and to use this information to inform further district action planning around special education. In addition, the new special education director and superintendent need to show a united front that the district is now under stable leadership, acknowledging potential ups, the upsets in the past as a result of inconsistent leadership. Organizational structure. In terms of commendations, the superintendent has expressed a keen interest in supporting the new special education director, which is really quite positive. Recommendations, although the special education director presently reports to the assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction and professional development, the district may consider the first year, at least the first year of the new specialized director's tenure of having at least a dotted line relationship, if not a direct, a report. We've articulated that greater in the report, a direct report relation with the superintendent. Given the past instability, role of the department, uh, the new director is likely and frequently going to need to support the superintendent to be successful in their role. So having that connection will be especially important. Personnel headcount. The district has maintained a notably low student with I E P to special education teacher ratio. And the district has maintained notably low caseloads among its related service providers, both of which are really quite positive. Recommendations, as a district with a very high student to paraprofessional rate, further study how child study teams determine the appropriateness of paraprofessionals. And I see here, further determine the appropriateness, what, so I apologize, that was cut out, but there, the statement was about the appropriateness of paraprofessionals as it relates to the balance between paraprofessionals and highly qualified teachers. Across the district, consistently document, monitor, encode professional, paraprofessionals correctly so that the district has a clear understanding of where paraprofessionals are working and that the district is engaging in conversations, that the child's study team members are engaging in conversations to assure that the right kiddos are getting the right services at the right time. Professional development, this one's very important. Through the balanced literacy initiative, the district has developed a framework for job embedded professional development for all teachers, including specialized teachers. And the impact design here is not just for the general ed curriculum, it's also designed for the special education program. The district administration has stressed the importance that this professional development be supported, centered around supporting all students, including students with disabilities. The administration's worked very diligently to make sure that this, from the top, is a side load. In terms of recommendations, we recommend the district further study the engagement of specialized teachers in this initiative at the school level. Should the district create, uh, a standard operating procedure manual, we recommend that, uh, standard operating training occur that's separate from the balanced literacy initiative, uh, that if the district pursues having a, an S O P M about specialized, which we recommend that there be dedicated training for. Per prof, or professional development continued for child study team and specialized ed teachers, the district may want to focus on further specialized, um, P E efforts, things such as R T I, I N R S, pre-referral. These are all things we've actually discussed in prior recommendations. In addition, handle with care as it relates to restraint and timeout and parentation, which we're going to talk about in just a moment. For paraprofessionals, the district may want to focus further on P E offerings, professional development offers, on the roles and responsibilities of paraprofessionals, their collaboration with the teacher in handle with care, ensuring that paraprofessionals who should be trained in this area are receiving the training and time with care. in this area are receiving the training and the time with care. Finance. The district's spending on special ed has remained stable over the past three years in our review of the district's finances for special ed. We recommend further study on why, and what we did was we looked at each program as it relates to spending, why the resource from teacher salary totals have steadily declined while paraprofessional salaries have increased. Further, multiple, or study why the multiple disability teacher category has increased. Next, continue monitoring paraprofessional salary expenses by program, ensuring that paraprofessionals are supplementing unsupplaining highly qualified teachers. Next, coming from the special ed director, each general supplies budget should meet the needs of each program. Further study why spending was so inconsistent in the past, better plan for future spending in the general supplies category. We looked at the general supplies category for each and every program that the district offers to students with disabilities, and that's where that recommendation came from. On operating procedures, and you can hear this throughout the presentation, this is a short one. Presently, we cannot offer any commendations in this area, aside from the fact that district did pursue something in the past around this but hasn't been moving forward on it. We recommend the district immediately develop a standard, the special education department's standard operating procedures manual. We also recommend that the district ensure the following. One, public access. Providing public access, access to this manual, posting it online on the district's website and links to it so everyone's on the same page with regards to what the district's operating practices are. Two, content, include criteria, procedures, and practices for each area relevant to the implementation of the report's recommendations. In terms of these operating procedures, we recommend the district implement them with fidelity. Once they're written and published, annually refine and consolidate guidance where appropriate to provide clear expectations and directions to all, to provide institutionalized record of, to all staff, including new teachers. And so when we say institutionalized record, oftentimes in school districts that don't have an SOPM, it's like, well, we've got these procedures and so-and-so posts about them, and sometimes when it's not recorded, that can become a problem. So that's why we recommend putting it in writing. Collaboration with stakeholders, collaborate with teachers, CST members and principals, and your special education advisory council members to consider this information and these resources and how they're useful to include in the manual, so include them in the actual creation of the SaaS department. And to the parents and families, in collaboration with local parent advisory groups, plan face-to-face trainings and online modules if it determines that's appropriate for parents to understand this. If feasible, provide a modified document with one major surround this, making sure that it's not jargon-y and that it's understandable to families, and that training is also available online to families. Collaboration, communication, and parent engagement, we just talked about dovetails nicely with this section. During interviews and focus groups with staff, parents, administrators, he's consistently shared that special ed teachers are very effective at communicating with families, and the praise for families or teachers was quite clear. The board shared that they've been updated on critical special ed matters, including the use of cooldown rooms and rest stops as well as parent education. We recommend the district develop consistent communication protocols specifically around communications coming from the special ed director to staff, to CST members, and to parents, so consistent communication, it's not sporadic, it's not piecemeal. The new special education director will need to quickly address the lack of consistent, past lack of consistent guidance and communication teachers. Instead of sending ad hoc emails to select groups, the new director must consistently send guides and memos that are shared by email to affected parties. In terms of additional recommendations, we recommend that a catalog, so to speak, a set of shared special ed key performance indicators be created, and that through the superintendent, the new special ed director and superintendent develop these KPIs, these key performance indicators, and share them with the board at least annually, and then making a connection to this review would probably be quite relevant. Indicators can include, these are just examples, are not limited to classification rates of students with disabilities in the district, exit rate of students with disabilities, achievement data, including the number of students that are meeting or exceeding expectations on the New Jersey Student Learning Festival, LRE data, where are children spending the time of day learning in an inclusive environment, a separate environment, what is that, what is that ratio? The number and type of district-sponsored parent engagement opportunities, so you're making clear metrics on that, and your annual performance report compliance indicators, which we've talked about earlier. Parent engagement, the district has an active special ed parent advisory council that frequently meets and discusses relevant topics, according to the website. That group is also nice enough to host us when we held our parent engagement conversation, we very much appreciate that. In terms of recommendations, the new special ed director should meaningfully engage with this CPAC and the special ed community at large to rebuild trust. The new special ed director should quickly develop a rapport with the district CPAC. The new CPAC can use this as an opportunity to share its concerns with the new director and use it as an opportunity to rebuild trust as voted from administrative churn, a lack of standard operating procedures, and a belief among parents that allow us or the most staff to have their job received additional services. We've now left space in our schedule to answer any questions from the board.
I would just like to say thank you to PCG for the comprehensive presentation, very informative. And I'd also like to thank Mrs. Karlo and Mrs. Zanna for their work on updating the look to our agenda and for the work they've done for that. I'd just like to start by saying, as I look at those who sit with me at this table, I see passion and I see commitment to our students. We come together with individual strengths, but as a whole, I see opportunity. We have the opportunity to learn and grow together. We have the opportunity to model our district's character education program and use heart, honesty, empathy, acceptance, respect, and trust in our process, respecting the minority voice as well as the majority voice. I am honored to be part of this board and look forward to seeing what we will do together as a team. During the course of the board meeting, the Rockaway Township Board of Education offers members of its public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operations of Rockaway Township Public Schools. Board reminds those individuals who take the opportunity to identify themselves by name and address to limit their concerns to the items listed on the agenda and/or items directly related to the operations of the school district. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered and response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility nor will be liable for any comments made by the members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of legal rights of those affected or identified in the comments, and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Can I have a motion, please, to open to the public?
Second.
And Mrs. Smith. Can I show hands? All in favor, any opposed, or extensions? If there's any members of the public that would like to address board?
It's a little strange. That's okay. Excited. I think this would be louder, we can't hear you in the back. That would be great. Thanks. Six and Sally, six and I was, make sure to drive Rockaway. I have a couple of things. One, on the agenda tonight, under administration, page 10, number five, you're being asked to include the organizational chart, the revision of the organizational chart. I believe the organizational chart is policy 1110, which means it needs two meetings. So I don't know, that's my understanding, but I'd like you to consider that, that's number one. Number two, a week and a half ago or so, I had a chance to look at the website and I checked out the committee assignments and committee appointments, and I have a few wonderings that I'm going to address to the president and vice presidents since we made the appointments. One involves negotiations. Two-thirds of the people on the negotiations committee are possibly conflicted. One is the current president of the PTA of the building where the principal is the head negotiator for the administration. By virtue of position, that's a very strong relationship, and perhaps objectivity and confidentiality is clouding. The other is the former president of a PTA whose principal is also on the negotiations team for the administrators, and by virtue of position, there was this very strong relationship. Furthermore, that said individual was often seen hanging around that building well after the bell rang, and in fact observed by parents and sitting in the principal's chair behind his desk. Objectivity, confidentiality, just a question or a wondering in my mind. That deals with negotiations. We then go to the CPAC appointments. We have two board of education members, president and vice president, who sit on the executive council. That's two people. You also have two representatives, not alternates, two representatives to attend the meeting. Two plus two is four. That's a quorum, and with your training, you should know that that's illegal. That's number one, I wonder, right? Number two, I wonder, the bylaws of CPAC clearly state that a board member may be invited to the administrative meetings of CPAC, a board member, not two. Number three, perceptions reality, and this is the gray area, and again, it's just a wondering, maybe you'd rather consider it. We have two board members who are members at large, you're the president and the vice president of the board, and now you're also members at large to the executive council of CPAC, that does research or assign tasks to CPAC and makes recommendations to the CPAC group that then makes recommendations to the board. How can you make recommendations to yourself? I question the legality, and I check I certainly question the ethics. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment.
Michelle, the D224 Omaha Avenue, Rockaway. First, I would like to thank PSG for your presentation. As a parent of a special ed student, these are themes I have experienced over the past nine years here in the Rockaway Township School District, decisions that were made by previous board members, by previous special ed directors, and I just want to thank you, the board, current board, for your commitment. These are gaps that we have seen over the years, and I really, as a parent, appreciate that you're taking the time and effort to dive into this, and I'm hopeful that with this report that you can put together a actionable, measurable plan that you can implement sooner than later, because our children really deserve the best, and I really appreciate your dedication and commitment to special education students, and I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and your acknowledgement of PCG and their hard work. We're very pleased with the comprehensive nature of the report. It's extremely informative, and I can commit to you as well as the community, it will inform very much the strategic planning process that's already been undertaken, and I will start by the end of February or early March, begin to start sharing drafts of that plan, and you'll see evidence of how the recommendations that are shared tonight are integrated to that plan, which we'll then report back to the community on a regular basis so that we're all accountable to making progress in all these areas. So they've really given us a strong foundation to jump off on, so I thank them and also appreciate your comments as well. Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Anyone else? Beg your motion, please, to those two front.
So moved.
Mr. Shields?
Second.
First on the agenda, mutations, I see that we have no correspondence. Is there anything else, Mrs. Smith?
No, there's nothing.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve to minutes?
So moved.
Can I have a roll call, please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Karlo?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Halbrook?
Yes.
Good evening, Rockaway Township. Over the past two weeks, our teachers have been engaged in various professional development activities in support of the new initiatives rolled out this past September. I'd like to acknowledge and appreciate our teachers and leaders' commitment and dedication to learning how best to implement these new programs and resources. For example, during the last round of coaching for balanced literacy, our teachers were asked to teach and receive feedback in real time during the coaching session, which was significantly different than previous coaching sessions. Without hesitation, they jumped right in, which speaks volumes about their professionalism and commitment to our community, and I thank them and appreciate them for that. I would like to salute our co-pleant team of teachers and leaders organizing a truly inspiring citizenship breakfast this past Tuesday morning. Our cafeteria here was packed with proud parents and family members as the team honored students nominated by teachers for excellent citizenship. This year, the awards included a personalized letter from a teacher to each student explaining why they were nominated for a citizenship award. It was a wonderful event and just another example of how here in Rockaway Township Schools, we are truly better together. Lastly, again, I would like to thank PCG and their representatives for their presentation tonight. The comprehensive report and presentation resulted from months of collaborative work between our staff and PCG. We entered into this contract with PCG hoping to receive this type of comprehensive report to inform our strategic planning process over the next three years. In the coming weeks and months, we will begin to generate action plans aligned with specific recommendations in the report, and the information shared tonight will also be posted on our website. And with that, I conclude my And with that, I conclude my comments with a caveat that, um, later in the meeting, I might like to add some additional comments, um, related to something on the personnel agenda. Okay, thank you very much.
Business administrator's report?
Good evening. The business office is in full budget mode as we piece together the first draft to be discussed at the February twelfth, twenty-twenty budget work session, which will be held here at Copland beginning in six P M. I had the opportunity to speak with Jessica Walker, our food services manager, about what we can do to reduce plastics and styrofoam use in the district. We have ordered paper straws, which will be appearing in our cafeterias as our current stock runs out. We will also begin to use sporks that will reduce the traditional fork, knife, and spoon from three plastic utensils down to two. Styrofoam trays are now going to be replaced by cardboard fiber plates in all elementary schools. With the help of our green team, we will continue to look for ways to become more sustainable. I am optimistic that our gym floors here at Copland and also at D B O and K D M will maintain a sufficient finish to get us to the summer and our complete refurbishment. Work is continuing with our architects, engineers, and surveyors from Land and Associates as we move forward with our project schedules for this upcoming summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Curry-Lawrence.
I know you made one fifth greater of him, I'm very happy.
Thank you.
I'll make sure he knows.
Good evening, members of the board and hello, Rockaway Township. One of our teachers has been nominated for a national award. Mrs. Veronica Boylanggada has been named nominated for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. Uh, these are the nation's highest honors for teachers of mathematics and science. The awards were established by Congress in nineteen eighty-three and are administered by the National Science Foundation on behalf of the White House Office of Science and Technology. Presidently recognized to one hundred and eight exemplary teachers each year. Presidential award, awardee youth receive a certificate signed by the president, a trip to Washington D C to attend a series of recognition events and professional development opportunities. A ten thousand dollar award from National Science Foundation, and they join a prestigious cadre of more than five thousand teacher alumni from across the nation. So good luck, uh, to Mrs. Boylanggada. On February seventh, we will make on February seventh, we will make our report cards available in the parent portal. Uh, this will be K through five's first use of the standards-based report card. Our teachers have been hard at work over the last few weeks, working in their grade books, and we commend them for their efforts. Going forward for K five, we will be moving to a new grade book within Genesis, which will make the work of standards-based grading much more efficient for them and clear for parents. Additionally, we are also in our January screening window, and we have been checking in with student progress on various assessments like D R A two, Acadiance, E Z C V M, and I Ready. From these assessments, we hope to gain additional insight into how our students are progressing. We will also be making our data dashboards available again for parents during this report card window for students in K through five. On Monday of this week, our teachers participated in a professional day consisting of various meetings and trainings. The bulk of this day was spent on training our K through five teachers on the Fancis and Penel reading benchmark system. Each grade level will continue to norm on this process throughout the spring in their grade level meetings with our consultant trainers. This assessment will aid our teachers in understanding the specific strengths and weaknesses of our readers as they progress through our schools and help them align their instruction to best serve our students. Other highlights included restorative practices work here at Copland, handle with care training, nurses recertification and C P R, fifth and sixth grade math articulation and discussion, discussion of placement criteria, and fifth grade math pilot review. Additionally, we have some more accolades. We had several people present at a recent conference at Monclova State University. Uh, we had Vanessa Waxman present web tools you can try in your classroom. Principal Alfonso Vanelle and Suzanne Barkaway from Copland present social emotional learning dashboard. Ivan Colvin from Stony Brook, uh, presenting on future-ready read-alouds. Joyce Harquail from Copland here, uh, presenting on infusing tech for engagement, efficiency, and differentiation. And I presented something called the Nerd Act. Thank you very much.
Next is, um, committee reports?
I don't have a formal report, but I would like to, um, thank Mrs. DeCarlo for sending out some invites. The operations committee will formally meet the last Wednesday of every month. We have scheduled a date all the way through June. June, unfortunately, we had to tweak the time, we have to do a revision, all that stuff, so to make sure it was convenient for, um, Mrs. DeCarlo with the closing of school as well, we moved that date to June seventeenth. Our first meeting is next Wednesday, January twenty-ninth at four thirty at the board office.
Anyone else?
Yes.
The new policy committee, Aaron Thomasini, Christine Kurilauru, and me, um, are planning to meet, uh, next Wednesday as well. Our January meeting was rescheduled from Tuesday, January fourteenth to Wednesday, the twenty-ninth at seven fifteen P M, um, so that we can accommodate all the committee members.
Thank you. And I have, um, education committee, we met last week on January fifteenth. Our next meeting will be February twelfth from four to five in central office. At our last meeting, we discussed several of the long-term and short-term projects, um, that, uh, Mr. Higgins had mentioned, uh, some of them, like the standards-based report board, our gener- uh, Genesis Plan, math library, and music curriculums, projects, as well as the C P S five. In short term, we also discussed the R T I in regards to budget and data management. We've also discussed the presentations that he noted and the awards, um, as well during our committee meeting. Overall, this extensive work is being done and it's in su- in support of our academic goals, our district academic goals. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, recommendations for board action. Can I, can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations on personnel? Items, items one through twenty-two?
Some move.
Second. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Curry-Lauru?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Haldberg?
Yes.
Madam President, may I make a few comments, ma'am? Thank you very much, sorry for the confusion. So I am very pleased, uh, to share that tonight's personnel agenda included a promotion for our very own middle school language arts teacher, Mrs. Marie Vercadabein, to become the new vice principal of Copland Middle School. Throughout the interview process, Marie demonstrated both the leadership skills and values we were looking for, as well as a sincere and deep commitment to the Copland Middle School community. I am confident she will prove to be a great fit for Principal Vanelle's leadership team. As Mrs. Vercadabein is currently a teacher, she will not transition into her new role until her replacement is fully onboarded. I am pleased to note her replacement is also on tonight's agenda, and Mrs. Lauren Crispino. Once we know more about Mrs. Cris- Crispino's start date, we will be able to plan more accordingly for both Mrs. Vercadabein and Mrs. Crispino's transition into their new roles. But again, congratulations to, congratulations to Mrs. Vercadabein, we're super excited to have her joining us.
Um, next, on, on the agenda is H I B, there are, there's one current investigation unconfirmed, and we vote on that next meeting. Then it follows with education. Can I have a, uh, motion to approve education recommendations?
Some move.
Second. Any board discussion?
I, like, I had said earlier, I just love seeing all these new teachers come into our district and, I think, it's wonderful.
I could open for public comment, is there anyone like to speak for, from a public regarding education? If not, um, can I have a roll call, please, on education matters? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Curry-Lauru?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Haldberg?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is special education. Can I have a motion to approve special education recommendations?
Some move.
Second. Mr. Thomasini, second. Any board discussion on special ed? Again, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? On special ed? I have a roll call, please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Curry-Lauru?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Haldberg?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, administration. Can I have a motion to approve the administration recommendations?
Some move.
Mrs. Brooks?
Second.
Mr. Thomasini? Board discussion?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to discuss number six, recommendation agreement. As I see in the last board meeting, the bus driver association and the board of ed committee came to agreement over winter break, and I see some of them in the audience, and once again, thank you for taking the time away from your families and work to do that. Uh, it is my recommendation to the rest of the board that we vote to approve the agreement.
I have a comment about number five to the public comment. Is that something that we need to pull out because it needs to have two reads?
Yes, I do. We should separate that. Okay, just, okay. Can I have a motion to table for number five?
Some move.
First, Mrs. Curry-Lauru. Can I have a roll call?
On that one, she's the second one?
That, I'm sorry, it was Mrs. Messick. Mrs. Brooks?
We're having a roll call on table one.
On table one, I'm sorry.
Open, crash, just unclear, Terry Burke here. Yes.
Mrs. Curry-Lauru?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Haldberg?
Yes.
Can I have a new motion to approve under administration, one, one, one through four and six?
So. Second.
Mrs. Curry-Lauru and Mrs. Shields, agree? Before we have a board on that, is there any public discussion? Anyone like to address? Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Curry-Lauru?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith? I am a yes on all items except for number two, on which I abstain. So noted. Mr. Thomasini?
Yes, on items one through four, however, I have to abstain from number six.
So noted. Mrs. Haldberg?
I am a yes on items one through four, and I need to abstain on number six.
So noted. Thank you. Next on the agenda is finance. Can I have a motion to approve finance recommendations?
Some move.
Second. Any board discussion on finances?
Yes, I have the opportunity to sign off on the vouchers, um, paid by the school district. Yesterday, the board office started up around ten A M. Um, as a partner board member for this responsibility, Lisa Messick joins me. We reviewed vouchers together, and we appreciate very much Mrs. DeCarlo and her staff providing assistance regarding any questions that came up. Um, I was very excited to approve some of the, uh, new, um, purchases for the classroom markers. Um, so it was a very wonderful experience getting to see that. And it is recommended that the financial items on the agenda be approved.
Anyone else? Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on finance? Mrs. Curry-Lauru, can I have a roll call, please, for finance items? Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Curry-Lauru?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Haldberg?
Yes.
Do you have new policy this evening? So, we don't have any discussion items, both business and new business, does anyone have any old business that they would like to discuss?
I would like just to congratulate the bus drivers, and again, the negotiation committee didn't happen, and I don't know, they all look a little confused, your motion passed. Thank you. He just looks a little confused. I'm older than you or either?
Neither.
Oh, I just want to say, uh, the, last week, the Copland strength and chorus did another wonderful concert. The first time my daughter was home with the flu, but I, my son still went anyway to listen to it in her absence, and it was just very wonderful, thank you.
I was there also, it was, it was very pleasant.
New business?
Hi, I have, okay. Uh, again, I attended, um, the St. St. James concert, it was great. We have a great music department here, just wanted to say thank you very much for all your hard work. Um, today I also attended a seminar entitled Ways to Reduce Costs and Minimize Operating Expenses. Uh, information will be sent to me tomorrow, I will forward it, uh, to the superintendent, Mrs. DeCarlo, and Mrs. Brooks, as she is the operations chair of the institution. Uh, additionally, yesterday I attended this Copland citizenship breakfast. Congratulations to all the students recognized at this event. I did want to mention, um, just add on to your comment, Dr. Spennian, I really love the letters that, um, accompanied this. It was a great effort by, uh, the Copland teams that put through all that effort to recommend those students.
Any other business?
I have to back to the room.
Okay.
Um, last week I attended the spelling bee, and it was exciting to see that the top three students were Rockaway Township students, considering all the students are from Morton, Den Mill, Rockaway Borough, and Rockaway Township. So that was super fun. Um, I know the students are going to be invited to receive a participation award. I would like just to confirm in years past, there's always been a little hiccup, so just to make sure that the students get proper notification, and their parents as well, so that everybody um, I know in the years past, some knew, some didn't, and we didn't have as many kids, I think, as we should.
I will double, you should confirm, but I can't, excuse me.
I can confirm, because I know I signed on this week, letters have gone out, and it's for the February nineteenth date. And certifications are already printed, but I'll just, I'll double, triple check it.
Thank you.
Sure, sure. Sure, sure.
So these kids are coming on the 19th?
Yes.
I just want to add that I had attended the Governance 3 Mandated Training last week. It was on student achievement, and it was delivered by the Institute of Leadership on the Jersey Schools.
This sounds very overtraining.
Yeah.
Is there anything to add? And now, the last question of the meeting, open to public comment? Can I have a motion to open to public comment? Some noted. Second. Mrs. Smith?
Christine Allison, I think I have to read one of them. I just wanted to thank the board, specifically the new agency, Mrs. Tanya, Rachel, and also two other members who are no longer because of the board meeting, and to the Rockaway Township Transportation Department, well, actually, Bus Driver Association, as I said, are very thankful with the outcome. We're happy with it. There's some trying times there, as you guys know, we've spent some long nights and we really appreciate the support we have done, meeting together and collaborating with, and it's been a great, I think, man definitely great spot where we're at and where we are and look forward to pushing this forward.
Christine Brusinski, 20 Devil Avenue, Rockaway, Jersey. I just wanted to take a minute, I wasn't able to come to the next board meeting, to thank everybody for their positions, coming onboard, coming off board, and switching your seats around, and it's not easy to do. Speaking in front of people isn't everybody's hat, so I commend those of you that are actually taking that rein and doing it. It takes a lot of guts, leadership, and I do see a team working, and I want good things to come from it. That's my first. My second is, I'm not a great public speaker, I just speak from the heart. I am VP of CPAC, I do it because I had a special education kid for a while. I like to see things happen for my own child, as well as everyone's, as do most of the parents that come to these meetings as special ed parents. We are a board that finds wonderful programs and people to come in and speak to parents about disabilities and anything. We take their advice, we take their concerns, and we bring it to the table, we're a board. Most of the parents that are at those meetings are parents, and to address Mrs. Downey's concerns and wonderings, soon, where the chief, the president, and myself, SVP, will take those concerns and wonderings and regroup, relook at. I know we have two board members that are meeting, we welcome them. Board members can be parents, parents can be board members. Those lines cross sometimes, and we'll make it work. So I just wanted to take that opportunity that we go through our bylaws. We're having a meeting with our new special ed director tomorrow, Susan and I. We haven't had consistency in this CPAC work for a very long time. We've worked really hard to get continuity and to get programs in, and our administration has changed, our terms have changed, our programs have changed, our dates have changed, our programs have canceled. We try to do things, you know, as best as we can as parents, and I wanted everybody to know that we're just parents. I mean, trying to bring these programs in to make parents more knowledgeable in what their kids are going through, so we do the best we can. Thank you.
Brian Adams, RTI. We'd just also like to talk real quick about the goings-on in Copland as we had several Copland teachers here tonight, but kind of scooted because we get up early. We're very proud of our citizenship letters, you know, it was another opportunity to have meaningful conversations with our students. We are proud of our brick bulletin boards that are all around the schools. We're working on numerous fundraisers, including one on the 11th hour, the dog rescue. The ping pong table out front is a huge addition. The kids are enjoying that, and we're really proud of our girls and boys basketball team, who are pretty awesome, so thank you.
Is there anyone else? If not, I'd like to adjourn. Motion to approve? Some noted. Only favor? And a motion to adjourn?
Some noted, so adjourned.
All in favor?